I'd like to call the Midland County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on Tuesday, March 15th at 9:00 a.m. And would you please call roll?
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Twilliger.
Here.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Noson.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Seven present, zero absent.
Commissioner Snyder, would you lead us, or Commissioner Twilliger, would you lead us in the invocation and pledge?
Heavenly Father, we pray for your blessing of wisdom on our meeting today. We also pray for your wisdom and guidance to all leaders involved with the Ukrainian conflict. We also pray for strength and perseverance for the Ukraine soldiers. Finally, we pray heartfelt prayers for adequate resources for all refugee families and children. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is the approval of the minutes for March 1st and March 8th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve the minutes and move on to the acceptance of the bills.
Properly addressed, General Bank claims for the weeks of 2/21 through 2/25, $536,133.03, with total general fund expenditures $174,256.59. General Bank claims for the weeks of 2/28 through 3/4, $1,748,246.41, with total general fund expenditures $414,720.58.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the bills.
Order. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will pay the bills, and now we are going to move on to a public meeting regarding the proposed rehabilitation of the Smith's Crossing Bridge and Great Lakes Bay Regional Trail Connection. John Schmoot and Tanya from Spicer both here to do a presentation, and then after that presentation, we will open it up for public comment. Welcome, John.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everyone. Again, I'm John Schmoot. This is the lead party. Part of me this morning, Tanya Moore from Spicer Group. And Chairman Bone, if it pleases you, I can begin just a brief overview of the project.
Please.
And then, like you said, we can just go into any comments that the public may have. The very first drawing that we have here, we actually have a couple of pictures. If I could, I'll be, I will be brief, but I just wanted to kind of set the stage for this as to how we got to this point. In 2008 and 2009, there was a Phase 1, Phase 2 study done by the three counties, Saginaw, Bay, and Midland Counties. And so, everybody got, the three counties got together to try to determine how to connect the existing rail trails in those three counties to each other. The trail from Saginaw to Bay City, it isn't actually tied into the trail systems yet, but there is a trail that has been built, it's on the west side of the river, that's essentially complete. There are great strides being made for the portion from Saginaw to Midland, and the portion from Midland to Bay City is, that's probably the least likely of the three to occur. It doesn't mean that it won't, but the issue is that we have to build a trail within an active railroad railway. So, that would be considered a rail with trail. So, the likelihood of that happening, it might happen, but I think that one's probably, Tanya, that's how it'll be down the road. This project, this bridge, that we're going to talk about here briefly, was identified in that link as a key link in 2008 and 2009. I don't know if there's a, does the next slide show the actual bridge itself? That's a, that's a great shot there. This project that we're asking you to consider for grant submittal to the Michigan and our trust fund is one piece of several pieces, but the entire project's about $4.6 million. We're asking for your consideration today to submit a grant application to the state for $300,000, which would be specific to the bridge itself, which is 300 feet. It's a, it's a crustile bridge, it's double span, each span is 150 feet, and then a small portion of trail on either side of that, of that bridge. It's going to be a fairly involved project, it has to physically be disassembled, relocated onto the adjoining property, and then refurbished and redecked, and then the two abutments and the center pier will have to be, if anybody would be willing to rebuild. Again, this is, this has been a project that's been out there for a very, very long time, and I think we're at the stage now to actually do this. Again, it's one piece of a larger puzzle. The Great Lakes Bay Regional Trail Group has done a phenomenal job with fundraising. There are some very, very good people on that board, and they're movers, they make, they know how to make things happen. So, as far, like I said, not to repeat myself, but it's one piece of a bigger project, I guess is the best way to say it. And again, this, this request today is just for $300,000. I don't know, I don't know if there's any, any other slides we want to look at here, but I think, is there, was the next slide an actual profile? Do we have a profile slide? It might be the next one. Nope, sorry. There we go. That, that'll give you a rough idea of what the actual structure looks like. Right now, it's fairly dilapidated and both sides are barricaded, but I don't know if there's, at this point, if there's any questions from the board, or, Tanya, did you want to add anything?
Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, Bailey Bridge is so historical, and I remembered this for all of you, just a little bit of information, it is in Ingersoll Township, which is where I live, in my district. And Bailey Bridge is absolutely historical, and I did get a phone call last night with regard to Ingersoll Township, wanted to make sure everyone knows that this has been included in their updated master plan, and they actually passed a resolution about three years ago to make sure that they, that the public knew that they supported this very, very much. In addition to that, I wanted to mention also that Midland Township is very actively working on connecting from the Bailey Bridge down Gordonville through Midland Township. So, as you said, the project, it, this is in Ingersoll, but it will be Midland Township. And then, as he said, this is a connector between Saginaw, Bay City, and Midland. It's huge, it's wonderful. That's all I have.
Commissioner Noson, and we will be, after this, we'll be opening up for a public, public hearing, so if anybody has anything they want to say, they're going to be welcome to say it. Commissioner Noson.
Yeah, just a point of information, when you say double span, do you mean two lengths to length, or is it?
Oh, just the width itself, each of those, each of those spans from the abutment to the center pier is about 150 feet.
Okay, that's what I wondered. Thank you.
Any other commissioner discussion on it? John, I guess the only thing I'd say is, I've been here since 1975. When I was a kid, we rode our bike all around town and went everywhere, and I always had a fishing pole on the back of my bike. And at that point, we used to go to the Bailey Bridge and fish all the time. So, I know there's some people out, and we haven't talked much about this yet, but there is, there's some, I'm hearing from my constituents that, hey, why are we calling this the Smith's Crossing Bridge? It is the Bailey Bridge. So, I don't know where we're at in the process, but I think that's something we definitely need to.
And I had an email from the Road Commission Director that said, and I don't know how far this goes, whether this is internally, or whether this is what they're going to call it on, on state grant applications or whatnot, but I believe that what, what I, what was referenced yesterday was, they're calling it Bailey Bridge at Smith's Crossing. And I, and I got, I don't know who the, I'm not sure who the deciding body on this would be for that, but.
But maybe that's something we could find out.
Yeah. Chairman Bone, if I could just add one thing.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing I didn't mention on this is that this project will be owned by Midland County Road Commission.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, are we all done? Okay, at this point, I'm, on this topic alone, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment? And if there is, it's comment, it's not question and answers. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address and come up and say what you want to say. Is there any? Yes, please state your name and address, Bill, and come on up and, yep, speak, yeah, thank you.
Hey, I'm Bill Bailey. I now live on Shade West near Anne, but I was born and raised corner of Brooks and Smith Crossing, about three miles from your family, in the Mulvaney's. In 1854, my great-great uncle came here, and in 1863, my great-great granddad came here and settled in Midland. And my great-great granddad's the one that was named after, he owned the property on the south side of the bridge somewhere. There was an article that I passed out, or, and 1904 is when the bridge went out, and 1907 is when they awarded a contract to the Joliet Bridge Company to replace the Bailey Bridge, and it's as big as you can see in print. Joliet also built Benson Bridge and the bridge at Curry, too. And the one at Curry's, Mr. Noson, is a one-span bridge.
Got it.
That's the difference.
Thank you.
I talked to some people from the Road Commission back when I, a year or so ago, this subject came up, and the gentleman I talked to, I can't remember his name, but he was not the head of the Road Commission, but he was like high up in the Road Commission. He said every time they sent me out to do something out there, they always sent me to Bailey Bridge. One other item, if you have a Bailey Bridge road there, it must have been a Bailey Bridge someplace to have a road in there. So, those are some comments that I just wanted to throw in. I got my information from a gentleman named Bird Vincent, who lives half a mile south, far my home. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on this item? Yes, please state your name and address, please.
Carl Haley, Councilman George of Sanford, 211 North Cedar, Sanford, Michigan.
Thank you, Carl.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This bridge, to me, is a little special, not because I live next to it, not because I'm from Midland or Sanford, but because I know exactly where the Sister Bridge is to this bridge. Some of you I've had a conversation with, but the Sister Bridge to this bridge is located in Bridgeport, Michigan. I was born and raised in Bridgeport, Michigan. My dad owned a gas station in Bridgeport, Michigan, which is located right next to the Sister Bridge of this bridge. In about 2010, 2000, is that correct? About 2010, 2011, Bridgeport Township took on the endeavors just as we're speaking today. They removed the bridge from its location, rebuilt the bridge, put it back on the new foundations, and that's part of the Iron Belt rail trail today. It was built by the same company that built this bridge and its idea. I was fortunate enough that my dad owned the gas station right next to it for over 30 years, and I was asked to put on the dedication presentation for that bridge in 2011. I strongly support the resurrection of this bridge, to keep our history intact, and put this trail together, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Is there anything else from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to ask public comment one more time, and then another time, and then this is the third and final time. If there's no cut, we're going to close the public hearing and move on to our next line of business. Thank you all. It's closed, and thanks for your input, Carl and Bill, also. So, now, we are going to move on to special program of the day, which is nothing, so we will not move on to com, public comment on anything that is not on our agenda today. Again, same rules apply, it's comment, not questions and answers, and there's a three-minute max. Is there any public comment? Yes, please state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Kristy Grochey, I'm an executive director with the VisiCare. We were here a couple of weeks ago just to bring awareness to the auto no-fault changes that had happened, where we're meeting with commissioners and asking them to adopt a resolution. I do want to reiterate that we are for the auto no-fault change that happened, we know that it was needed. There was just things that happened to home care agencies in the wake of the change. So, we typically charge between $28 and $32 an hour to take care of, to take care of the families in their home, and the auto industry now is reimbursing us at a rate about $14 to $18 an hour. And that is what we pay our caregivers to care for the people that stay in their homes. And we do have constituents that live in Midland, that's why we are pleading with commissioners to adopt, help us adopt a resolution. We do have lots of other counties that have about 10 to 12 that have adopted a resolution. The last time I was here, we did pass out, you know, examples or copies of that for you guys to see. We just really want to bring awareness to it, we want people to know that people are dying, there have been people that have died because home care agencies have closed their doors and just left the person in their bed or in their chair because they went out of business. And they need a caregiver to come into their home to survive. So, that's what we're doing, is we would like to get placed on the agenda so we could give a presentation to you guys to be able to answer your questions. Ryan Harrison, I know, has emailed and sent out things to everyone, and if you guys could allow us to do that, that would be amazing. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on anything that is not on the agenda? Yes, please state your name and address.
Julie Wagner with the VisiCare Health Care as well. This week is a really important week in Lansing, we're really hitting the legislature's heart. We're in dire need, dire need now. There are people dying. I, again, got three calls last week, for Midland, I can't help them, we can't help them. So, what are they going to do? They have to sit there, their families are, have to quit their jobs to take care of them. I have one family who's, who's going to lose their house because they have to take care of a loved one, because nobody can afford to go in, this is, it needs stopped, we need help to make everyone realize, as a company, you can't take a 45% cut, you can't get paid $14 to $18 an hour, it doesn't work. We're one of the last ones standing. There are no more, I've called, I've tried to get help for other people, there's no one left. We need your help. If you get on your agenda, we can give you more statistics and, you know, see any other questions you may have, but it, it's dire now. You have people in Midland who are going to be in a nursing home, they may pass away, and it's bad right now. So, please, you know, get us on the agenda, we'll, we'll talk to you some more, and we'll go from there.
We'll get you on the agenda.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on anything that is not on the agenda today? Yes, please state your name and address.
Good morning, my name's Jeff Sorenson, I have a place up on Secord Lake. About a year ago, I had the opportunity to address your peers in an open comment up in Gladwin, and I mentioned the tight spot they were in. At the time, people were asking two questions, when will we get our lakes back, and how much will it cost? And at the time, a lot of people expected the counties to foot the bill. I went on to explain a year ago that a group of friends on Secord realized three things. First, significant funding is needed in order to return the lakes and reduce the cost to property owners, that all four lakes are connected. This wasn't a Secord issue, it was an issue that connected all four lakes together, and that the plan we had through the delegated authority was the only viable path forward to return the lakes in a timely manner. And we decided to invest our efforts to help the counties by reaching out to elected officials at the state and federal level to bring awareness and seek help. Our guiding principles focused on working collaboratively and in a professional manner with elected officials to solve this difficult situation, and we also realized, given the opportunity, others would join us. The Restore the Lakes Campaign quickly grew with all four lake associations participating, and you may have seen a brief segment on the PBS documentary Recovery. Your Sanford Lake Association took a leadership role here at Midland. The campaign included education and communication to make this situation easy to understand. They held letter-writing events, the most memorable, at their annual picnic, where a huge storm came through, monsoon-type rains, big wind, trees down, the meeting was canceled before it ever got started, but people stayed. They stayed to listen, to learn, they stayed to write letters to their elected officials to ask for help. And since this grassroots campaign began with the help of the counties, the townships, state officials, federal officials, the Four Lakes Task Force volunteers, we find ourselves in a unique situation to bring significant money to the counties. Senate Bill 565 is waiting for approval in Lansing. In this past Friday, we learned of a three-quarter million dollar federal grant to provide dam safety equipment that will benefit all four lakes. So, in closing, you may have received letters over the summer with the phrase, "My friends and I are writing letters to our state and federal representatives seeking financial support, we want to help you as our local officials restore the lakes." I wanted to share this, it's a wonderful story of a community working together to find solutions. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please state your name and address, please.
Good morning, Kelly Backs, Combe, Michigan, and I live up on Tobacco River. I was part of that breached video that he spoke of, that Mr. Sorenson spoke of, and in there, I was no too sad. And what that is, a no too sad, is we want the lake back. Per the PSC survey that Four Lakes Task Force helped, the majority of the people want the lake returned. The thing is, we don't want to pay for it. We know that you're here today to discuss an issue that regards these lakes. So, with that being said, there are people that are responsible for what took place on the day that the dams broke. Those people are the ones that need to be sitting in a room like this right now, explaining what took place, what was the cause of it, but we're not hearing from those people. It's been crickets. There's still, there's still people up in those regions that have not had any help with rebuilding their homes, with getting their wells returned. So, with these bills that he mentioned, 565, there's also other bills that are attached to it. One of the bills that's attached to it is to pay for operations. So, why is Four Lakes Task Force in such a hurry right now to get the operations established onto a sad that was brought forward to a court in 2019, prior to even any ownership going to the counties or Four Lakes Task Force? And it was for a total different ask, it was to maintain a lake level. There are currently no lakes to maintain. So, as you go forward, you're going to hear some things today, I hope you listen with an open mind, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. State your name and address, please.
I'm Tammy O'Donnell, I live on Wicksum Lake in Four Lakes Township. I'm here to read a letter from our president of the Wicksum Lake Association. He couldn't be here, so he wrote this. On behalf of nearly 1,400 members, the Wicksum Lake Association would like to give a strong show of support for keeping the positive momentum of our guests, of our quest to restore all the lakes in our community in the most efficient manner possible. We support this interim measure by our local leadership to ensure that our progress stays on target. Wicksum Lake Association has been supporting our community by doing several events, not only, not only to get to know our fellow lake owners and supporters a little better, but to show that real power comes from many great hands. We have also learned from human spirit in the days after our community's disaster, that how working together, I don't, okay, has made this better, has made our progress better. We are very proud of our great people that have not only rolled up their sleeves, done lots of fundraising to help our, help us assist in the fine work by all the leaders, such as Four Lakes Task Force, the counties, and most importantly, the people of the community that have suffered so much during this time. We are in full support of this stopgap measure, and look forward to, to assist by hosting lake bottom cleanups, social events, keeping the positive human spirit alive in our community, and hopefully assist in some way to get our lakes back in minimum impact to all people that have already suffered so much. We appreciate all you have done and will do in the future to move this forward to getting our lakes back together. Sincerely, Doug Hill, Wicksum Lake President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please state your name and address, Carl.
Since we're discussing the Sanford Lake Project, I would like to commend Four Lakes Task Force, Midland County, and Gladwin County in their endeavors to help us rebuild my town. And not only did I lose my town, I lost my house, so I understand the loss. So, I want to thank all the people that came together and helped put this on. It's a heck of an endeavor to do, and I know personally about how, what people are going through. And to organize, come up with funding, put a plan together, this has been extraordinary, something nobody else has done before. Look at it, we're number five in the world's worst disasters, check it out on Facebook. Our claim to fame is that we've had a natural disaster that was horrendous, zero loss of life. That's because of the people that planned it, looked at, we maybe have this problem, and we were prepared for it. I was downtown when the dam broke, Sanford Lake Dam broke. I got out in about 15 seconds. But I want to commend the Four Lakes Task Force, and Midland County Board, and Gladwin County Board, and the people that are working with them, because there's a whole group of people that Mr. Kepler's put together, and I want to say that we in Sanford really appreciate his endeavors. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Any other public comment today? No public comment? We will close public comment and move on to standing committee report number one.
Dated March 11th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the amendment to the 2021 Section 5311 Operating Grant Agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Vice Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Jeanette Snyder for James Geisler Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Administration Operations Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Lynn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on up, Lynn.
That's okay, I didn't need to comment. I just wanted to say this is simply a change of language, and it's from 2021, so evidently they were reviewing and decided that language wasn't quite appropriate, so that's all it is. No change in funding, nothing else.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thanks, Lynn.
Any commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no motion carries.
Committee report number two, please.
Dated March 11th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the request to change the name of the Midland County Gypsy Moth Suppression Program to the Midland County Spongey Moth Suppression Program. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Vice Chair, Eric Dorian, Jeanette Snyder for James Geisler Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Administration Operations Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no motion carries.
Committee report number three, please.
Dated March 11th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to apply for a grant through the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund and the attached resolution of support. The purpose of the grant is to provide funding for rehabilitation of the Smith's Crossing historic bridge. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Vice Chair, Eric Dorian, Jeanette Snyder for James Geisler Administration Operations Committee, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, Eric Dorian for James Geisler Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee recommend adoption of Agenda Item 14-3-22.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Can I get a second on that?
Oh, yeah. We need support. Support? Thank you.
Thank you.
No public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
No.
Commissioner Snyder?
I would just say, after, you know, hearing what we've heard today and looking into it further, I would just like to... further, I would just like to, if it's appropriate in the future, call it the Bailey Bridge, at Smith's Crossing, the full title that I guess the road commission's using, so. It was good information today. I appreciate it.
Yep, it was. Any other discussion? Ann Callroll, please.
Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no motion carries.
Committee report number four, please.
Date is March 11th. Properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the request to approve the plan to issue bonds in the amount of $10 million to provide interim financing for the lake level project by the Four Lakes Task Force. We recommend the approval of the request from the Four Lakes Task Force that the Board of Commissioners are relatively pledged to limited full faith and credit of the county of Midland to back 20% of this project. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, Eric Dorian for James Geisler Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 13-3-22.
Thank you very much. Before we call on public comment, where I see Joe and Dave are here from Four Lakes, would we like to bring them up to?
Yes, I'd like to.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Do we need a second?
Not on this.
Not, I don't think so.
Oh, yes, you do. I'm sorry.
We'll take a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
We got to take it out, Dave.
All right, we're moving forward.
Good morning, I'm Dave Kepler, President of the Four Lakes Task Force, and with me, as Mark mentioned, is Joe Kalani, the Four Lakes Legal Counsel. He's with Clark Hill. He's also the bond attorney in this matter, and we're here to, available, answer any questions you may have. As it's been laid out, we're seeking approval for a financing plan, as well as an issue of a grant anticipation note for the restoration of Four Lakes, and behind that would be the full faith and credit of the counties. The financing plan was covered in our May 2020 Restoration Plan. The plan outlined the financing of recovery and restoration of the lakes with a planning estimate of approximately $250 million. In addition, approximately $50 million already was committed to the recovery plan, and we outlined in that $10 million needed for 2022 to get to the design and permitting of these dams and financing for reconstruction. The state senate bill is passed. Senate Bill 565 with an appropriation of $250 million towards this effort. The senate house leaders and the senate house leaders are in a negotiation with the administration to provide funds to the Four Lakes Restoration Effort. So what we're asking today, in addition to approving the financial plan, is approving a note of anticipation that we can issue if, in fact, the grant gets approved, but we don't have the funds administratively for a few weeks or months or whatever. We are in a position of cash flow management with suppliers out there, and we need them. So this would be a bridge loan. So the note would be issued if there was an approved grant, and there's a need for funds before the state funds were administratively offered. We would not issue notes if there's not a signed grant. However, we probably would come back and talk about what we would be doing next in terms of interim financing. But we expect the status of the grant this month. We need the funds to get through April without pausing construction or engineering. So what we're asking for you today is to approve a plan, not the $250 million, and the anticipatory note. I would point out that we've gone through all this process with Eatonville and Sanford failed, after they failed, hence the Seacord and Smallwood dams were lowered. We've been able to get through the recovery with $5 million of private funds, 22.5 million of state funds. We've spent $15 million of federal funds. We have probably another 10 to 20 million of federal funds that we have if we can get the state funds. And so we've done a lot of recovery with no assessments to date and no burden financially on Midland or Gladwin County. So we're moving forward, and we we expect money from the state and work through that. If we don't, we'll look at other options and stuff to do. Clearly, the lake communities did not cause this issue. The system failed under the ownership of a private owner, not in compliance with federally regulated ways to operate, leaving the state, counties, and communities to address the issue. Voice Hydro is gone, and the counties of Four Lakes have agreed to resolution and a contract that the best alternative to recover from the failure and to restore these lakes with a system that we have confidence in. But there's really no other alternative than to move forward. It would be, cost more than $100 million to remove these dams and go through environmental restoration. I see no one federally, state, or locally raising their hand to take that on. And clearly, the best effort we have, the Four Lakes Task Force, is to move forward. And the Four Lakes Task Force Board is made up of lake owners. And if we understand the cause of hardship this has had to many, while it personally took Patty and I a year to get back into our house after the flood, I was blessed with the financial means to do that. We clearly understand at the Four Lakes Task Force that a lot of people don't have those financial means to get through this, and we're trying to work through that by offsetting this as much as we can. We spent a lot of effort seeking funds to offset the burden of the restoration to our community. I believe our legislation representatives understand that. I believe our governor understands that. They've said that publicly. The path the counties are on, the one our communities want, and what the state has agreed to, is to restore the lakes, their environment, and bring them back to the quality of life that we had before this. I ask for your approval of the resolution before you, and thank the board for your continuous support of our efforts.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you. Any commissioner discussion? No commissioner discussion, any public comment? Please state your name and address, and remember, it's three minutes of comment, not questions.
Hi.
Hi.
Good morning. My name's Tony Bax. I'm from Coleman, Michigan, and I have properties on the Tobacco River. Today, the county is being asked to pass a plan of financing. In simple terms, you are pledging the county's full faith and credit to fund $240 million for a project with $10 million in anticipation notes. Anticipation notes are a short-term loan to bridge from a grant or bond or loan. These anticipation notes are anticipation of loans, grants from the United States, loans, grants from the state of Michigan, or loans or bonds from a district or a special assessment district. As far as I know, there is no grants from Uncle Sam. There's no grants from the state of Michigan, as this is stalled in legislature, and no special assessment district, as there has still been no vote on that. So what exactly are we anticipating? If state funding fails to materialize, then it will fall to the special assessment group. How might this affect a special assessment district vote that you guys will have in a couple of months? How will this protect me from excessive costs? Is the benefit worth the risk? Remember the loan part of the anticipation notes. Straight from the plan of financing, the loans or bonds will be issued pursuant to Part 307, will be secured by and payable for the collection of special assessments against properties in the district. In other words, if there's no grant from the state of Michigan, the special assessment will shoulder all the costs. As far as I know, there is no promise in your proposal if the state of Michigan doesn't come through. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please state your name and address in three minutes or less.
John King, Command from the Sanford Lake Association. I have a letter I want to read to you from our president, Tim Holesworth. As you know, Sanford Lake in particular benefits Midland County in many ways. It's a recreational hub for county residents, especially the Midland County Park in Sanford. The lake also provides an enhanced property tax base for county residents who choose to live in the lake. Short, the benefits to the county and its residents amount to billions of dollars of revenue each year. We feel every effort should be made by all of us to restore the lake as quickly as possible. On behalf of our Sanford Lake Association Board and the 190 member households we serve, I want you to know that we fully support the efforts of the Four Lakes Task Force in their massive efforts to restore our lakes. We particularly want you to know they have our full support in their quest to seek $10 million in interim financing, if needed, to keep the project on course. We respectfully request the full support of the Midland County Board of Commissioners in this endeavor. Sincerely, Tim Holesworth, President of the Sanford Lake Association.
Thank you. Yeah. You can leave it, and we can make some copy. Give it to Jessica Bridget probably would be the best, and we'll get a copy out to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please state your name and address.
Good morning, Kelly Bax, Coleman, Michigan. I have property on the Tobacco River. As I have stated on numerous public forums, the Tupper was not held legally. This decision for Midland County Commissioners to take on 20% of a $10 million good faith note in anticipation of Michigan providing grant funds affects every resident of Midland County. That is why this should be a vote of the people, such as the village for gypsy moth ring or school bond issues. When government officials ignore the people and take it on upon themselves, then they also take the responsibility for the results and the outcome of their decision-making without the support of two-thirds of the county residents affected by the decision. Three, Gladwin County Commissioners voted 4 to 1 to accept the good faith note, but only after FLTF Dave Kepler verbally promised Commissioner Ron Taylor that if no Michigan grant money is acquired, that the good faith note will not be pursued, and no money will be put on any SAD. And if the bills do not pass, FLTF will look into pursuing other funding. Wicksum Lake Association put out an announcement recently in regards to Bill 565. Question, is this a revolving loan that has to be paid back, or a grant from the state that does not have to be paid back? I asked that question, I've never received an answer. If paying the state back, does that make the state a lending facility that benefits from destroying a dam and then loaning the money to the victims to get it rebuilt and made whole? This seems like a conflict to me. Four Lakes Task Force had, along with Voice Hydro, put in for a winter drawdown permit to make needed repairs in 2019 and going into 2020. The state denied the drawdown permit, citing muscle concerns and suing for $300 million. FLTF even agreed to move muscles and gave the state $1 million for muscle studies. Where did that money come from, and exactly what was the conditions, if any, for those funds? So the state denied the winter drawdown to allow repairs to be made to the Eatonville Dam and leaving it in disrepair, thus making it dangerous to life and infrastructure. Why is FLTF, then, as the county's delegated authority, not demanding or going after the state and the federal government to pay for the entire project that their poor and dangerous decisions caused by forcing the lake level up with the dams in disrepair? Let us not forget, the state knowing that the dam was in disrepair had in 2019 given FLTF $5 million to make those needed repairs even before FLTF and the counties actually purchased the dams and the properties. Again, I cited that Bill 469, if it passes, it pays for the operations. So again, more cart before the horse. Four Lakes Task Force is asking that we take on an operations cost when there is nothing to operate, administrate, or maintain without a final report, without a methodology, and without foreclosure studies. This is all premature. I ask that you please use this time to think about what you're about ready to do with this vote that should have gone to the people. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Is there any other public comment today?
Okay.
Yes, please state your name and address.
Yeah, Jeff Sorensen, I've got a place on Seacord Lake. Remember, my friends and I are writing letters to state and federal representatives seeking financial support for the plan. We want to help you as our local officials restore the lakes. While we have no way to track the individual letters or emails sent, we can report live letter-writing events generated 23,113 individually addressed, signed letters. And to put this in perspective, if they were stacked up, they'd be about five and a half feet tall. These letters represent the overwhelming positive energy in our community to work together to find the funding to restore the lakes. At this point, as a community, we need to focus on the $250 million infrastructure grant being considered in Lansing. The objective is real simple. We need to move the $250 million from Lansing to Gladwin and Midland Counties to support the restoration plan on behalf of the counties. This is significant infrastructure money that will not only help solve our problems as property owners to restore the lakes, but stimulate the local economy during construction and after. This will help reduce cost burden for property owners, which was a key objective we started with a year ago. Your approval will continue the focus on Senate Bill 565 while sending a positive message to Lansing. Remember, they're negotiating right now. This sends a positive message. Avoids delays to timelines to start restoring the lakes and returning them by 2024, cost of delay. Secondly, it allows the Four Lakes Task Force, on behalf of the counties, to continue to access millions of dollars in federal grants by matching funds. That's a key thing. Millions of dollars could potentially be at risk here. Avoid delays in the stabilization work being done on Sanford Dam. And it creates the ability to secure a bond once the grant's approved. It provides upside to the county. There's no downside, there's no risk. If there's no grant, there's no bond. They've made that very, very clear. So my friends and I wrote letters to state and federal officials to help secure support for the counties. Please pass this resolution to help us move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please state your name and address.
Matt Smith, Eatonville Township. I would just like to state my support for the comments that were just made in the positive momentum that has been made by the Four Lakes Task Force. In the first 12 months after the dams failed, a lot of us as homeowners and residents in Midland County were very unsure about what was going to happen and how we were going to get there. What we've seen is a plan and an effective plan. And what's been encouraging to a lot of us is that in the last 12 months, the positive momentum that has happened and the work that we've seen, and we don't want to see that momentum slow down or stopped. And so we would encourage you to adopt this resolution, keep that momentum moving forward. And again, as he said, show Lansing our support so we can access those monies. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please state your name and address.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Dr. Karen Moore. I'm the Chair of the Gladwin County Board of Commissioners and also a longtime resident of Wicksum Lake. Hopefully, you know that at last week's Gladwin County Board meeting, we did adopt this resolution. We see the progress that is happening, and we understand that without this resolution, any pause in this construction could be detrimental to the timeline. Again, being on Wicksum and knowing that we're likely the last lake that will be impacted by the success of the Four Lakes, the thought of saying to any citizen, we had to pause because we couldn't understand what this interim financing would be, the impact of it, and that now it's 27 or 28, I don't want to have those conversations with my constituents. Gladwin County understands the need to keep this project going. Gladwin County understands the work that the Four Lakes is doing. Restore the Lakes, the positive campaign that has brought all Four Lake associations together, the momentum that we have behind this just cannot be, in my opinion, stopped. So, you know, very, very exciting news last week when we got the three-quarters of a million dollars from the federal government on behalf of this project. Fully believe that the, you know, we've gotten so many, so many funds already, additional funds will be coming in, but to, at this point, stop this project would, in my opinion, be quite detrimental. So Gladwin County was in support of this. We hope you will be as well. You know, it's mentioned in the letters, and, you know, five and a half feet tall would come over my head, but we've gotten those, and I'm sure you have too. So we hear from the people resoundingly that they want to keep this project moving, want to have these lakes back. Even if they're not on the lake, they understand the benefit to the counties and to the citizens. So very important. We look forward to the continued working relationship with Midland County in doing this, with the village of Sanford, Eatonville, a lot of partners at the table saying, how can we get this done? And it's headed by the Four Lakes, and we want to continue to support their efforts and their progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any? Yes, I see some more public comment. Please state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Glenn Moots. I live at 833 West Campbell.
I live at 833 West Campbell Court in Eatonville. Our house is about 15 steps off the water, so you can imagine what we went through. In the two years since, I've been overwhelmed by two things. One is the personal difficulty that so many people have gone through, but also the overwhelming impressive efforts of so many at the county, at the state, at the federal level. My neighbors here, Mr. Holsworth and Ms. Sworson, Mr. Kepler. I think this is just a remarkable effort. I think not only are we leading the way for our own area, but leading the way for other areas too. The sense that I get from the dam task force safety meetings was that there are so many in a similar situation, and I would love for us to take a leading role in that, to really set an example of that cooperation, a way of moving forward on a situation that has really been sitting for 100 years without resolution. So I just want to encourage so much of what you've heard today to move forward with this, to move us all forward. Those of us that lived on the lake or lived near the lake and moved here for a reason, I don't even have a boat, but I'm here in support of the lake and in support of my neighbors, and I thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please state your name and address.
My name is Teresa Kunka, and I am a Sanford resident. I'm just going to keep it short and sweet because I feel like my community has said many of the same things that I feel, but I am here in support of passing the resolution as well for the Four Lakes Task Force.
Thank you, Teresa. Is there any other public comment? No other public comment? Ask one more time, is there any other public comment? There is not. We will move on to Commissioner discussion, and do we have any Commissioner discussion?
We had it already.
Yes, Commissioner Snyder.
I just want to thank the community for coming together and coming out and speaking. That's what we've always done through this disaster, and I'm just really thankful for that. I'm also in support of the resolution. I believe we need to move forward, and we need to heal and get our lakes back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Commissioner Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
100% yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee report number five, please.
Dated March 14th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the Administrator Controller's recommendation to approve premium pay in the form of a one-time $1,000 lump sum to the six countywide elected officials and all non-bargain-for employees who were required to return to work on June 1st, 2020, and continue to perform work in person during the COVID-19 pandemic. Total estimated cost of this premium pay is $1,021... I'm sorry, $121,000, of which $90,000 is to come directly from the American Rescue Plan Act funding, and $31,000 will come from the general fund revenue loss funding. We further recommend that this bonus be negotiated with all bargaining units. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, Eric Dorian for James Geisler Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 16-3-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? The only thing I'd like to point out is I want everybody to know the Board of Commissioners is not receiving this, for the public to know. So, and that's all I have to say. So Ann Colwell, please.
Commissioner Dorian.
Yes.
Noson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Okay, we have no RPCs. We have no old business. We do have one item of new business that'd take a motion to open up to.
So move, please.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. And will you please read the item of new business?
Dated March 10th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend waving County Policy 101.3 to reappoint Richard Delinsky to the Community Mental Health Services for Central Michigan Board of Directors. This appointment is for a fourth term, ending on March 31st, 2025. I also recommend accepting the recommendation from the Midland Business Alliance President and CEO to appoint Ms. Denise Berry to the Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works Workforce Development Board with a term ending on June 30th, 2023. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, District Number 7, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chair, I recommend adoption of Agenda Item 17-3-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Yes, Commissioner Glazer.
Yes, I've worked with Mr. Delinsky on Community Mental Health Board for five years now, and he's been there longer. I know that his contributions are highly valued by everyone there, and I fully support his recommendation for his reappointment.
Thank you. Commissioner Noson.
Yeah, I just also like to say I sit on the Michigan Works Workforce Board, and I highly recommend Denise Berry as a member of that board.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, that will be approved, and we appreciate the willingness to serve. We're going to move now onto Commissioner comments and start with Commissioner Dorian.
Oh, just wishing everybody a happy and safe St. Patrick's Day on Thursday. Be safe. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Noson.
No additional comments.
Commissioner Snyder.
No additional comments.
Commissioner Glazer.
Yeah, I would just like to thank everyone for certainly all of the work that has been done. I appreciate the anxiety, the concerns that are expressed, and I just continue to pray that we will work together in harmony to get this resolved and move our work forward, and we will do what we can to support you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, I as well appreciate all of the comments, and we're open to always hear you, and thanks for everyone coming today. It's been a good discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler.
No comment.
And I'd also like to say I think it's amazing the way the communities come together on this project, and I think, you know, well, it's a long-term project, but we're getting there, and we can start to see the light at the end of the tunnel a little bit. So, and I never would have guessed, I know I received a bunch of letters, but I never would have realized it was 23,000 letters. So obviously, there's a lot of support for this project. So thank you to everybody that's working on it. That's all I have. Let's go to Commissioner meeting schedule and go to Commissioner Dorian.
I plan on attending the State of the City on the 23rd, which is Wednesday, next Wednesday. Have EMS Advisory Board Wednesday, the 30th, at 3:45 in this room. Human Services is scheduled to meet April 4th, which is Monday. It says noon on here, but it should say 2 o'clock in the first floor conference room, and I believe that is it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Noson.
Yes, I will be participating in the MAC Legislative Conference down in Lansing, the 20th through the 22nd, and I will be moderating a session on workforce development in that session. On the 23rd, I will be participating by phone with the Health and Human Services Meeting. That's at 9:30. On the 24th, we have the Water Asset Management Council Meeting in Lansing at 10:30. On the 4th, April 4th, at 11:00 a.m., the Midland County Internet Committee... I'm sorry, let's get that correct. Midland County Internet Connectivity Committee. Thank you. Be meeting. And then on the 5th, we do have Finance Committee at 1:30. And on the 6th, the We Hear You Group has a session at 5:15. And I think that's plenty.
Thank you. That is plenty. Commissioner Snyder.
This afternoon, there's a Great Lakes Bay Annual Meeting that I'm going to be attending. Always good information there. Wicksum Lake Improvement Board has had a meeting for 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, the 16th. Road Commission on Thursday, the 17th, at 9:00 a.m. I'm going to go to Warren Township on Monday, the 21st, at 6:30. I'm also going to go to the State of Midland City Address on the 23rd. The 31st is another Road Commission meeting. Of course, I'll be at Finance, and then we have Parks on April 6th at 6:00 p.m. The Village has a meeting 7:00 p.m. on April 11th, but I did just go to the one last night, so we'll see if I attend that one. And that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Glazer.
Yes, tomorrow evening, I have Homer Township that I will be attending. Thursday, my wife and I are going to take off for a couple of weeks to go visit family and some friends, and I guess we'll be back in time for our next meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, tomorrow, March 16th, I have Community Mental Health Wraparound, and that will be a Zoom. On March 21st, we have Community Corrections Advisory Board Committee Meeting. Additionally, I have a Senior Services Meeting, and I have not quite decided where I'm going to go yet. We all have that double booked, sometimes triple it. On March 23rd, I also will be attending the State of the City. March 24th, I have Drug Court. And April 7th, I have Drug Court as well, and Region 7 Agency on Aging. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler.
On April 5th, at 2:30 in the first floor, the A&amp;O Committee will meet, and that's it.
Thank you. I will be attending the State of the City on the 23rd also, and I have a fairly light schedule. The only other thing I have is the Midland Business Alliance at 3:30 p.m. on Monday, April 4th, at the Business Alliance headquarters. So that's all I have for meeting schedules, comments. It's the end of the business.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, the same. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. to meet an executive session of the Board of Commissioners and for the committees to resume their duties. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.